Hi, welcome to a regular meeting of Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, February twenty eighth. It is ten oh three AM. Our special meeting ran just a few minutes long. But all members appear and this regular meeting is called to order. Everyone please rise in invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Hardin County. And we pray that you be with Ukraine during this time of Russian invasion. We pray that you protect our people, protect churches. And we just pray that you be with us in all that we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, I'm sorry, three is approved minutes of the February eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting as presented by Connie Beckton, County Clerk.
So moved.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel law register claims from February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. This morning, we had Ms. Joyce Lane standing in for Mrs. McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, five hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and seventeen cents. These vouchers are the county's bills and payroll-related expenses that were presented on February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Our cash report summary, general checking account is twenty-one million, six hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-one cents. Tax pull, general account, three hundred twenty-one dollars and nine cents. For a total of twenty-one million, six hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Item five, authorization paid county bills as presented by Angela Dorr, County Auditor. Morning, Ms. Dorr.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for February the ninth through the tenth are six hundred and three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents. Pre-approved expenditures for February the sixteenth is ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. Pre-approved expenditures for February the twenty-third are thirty thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. The expenditures for Commissioners Court today are two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. There's a list of additional bills in the amount of one million, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. And so the total expenditures and transfers is one million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. The gross payroll for February the tenth was five hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents. And the total transfers for that payroll was six hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. The gross payroll for February the twenty-fourth was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. And the total transfer for that payroll is eight hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Make the pledge of allegiance.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Dorr.
Thank you.
Item six, consider request by Mr. Paul Henderson, Henderson Law Firm, to adopt Resolution thirteen dash twenty-two, authorizing approval of proposed Texas statewide opioid settlement agreements. Henderson, you want to come on up?
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sent us a presentation. Let me find that. All right, there we go.
Good morning. We encourage this to all of y'all as when we resolve the Johnson-Johnson opioid, we're hoping that it would follow the same template with these settlements. They did. This is a statewide settlement in the sense that the Office of Attorney General and the state of Texas have signed off on these. We have resolved the cases with Endo and Taba, who were manufacturers. And we have also settled with the distributors, which would be McKesson Cardinal and American Bourbon. The, what this means to Hardin County is we call that you had a direct payment of almost a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars from Johnson-Johnson. Then we have an additional four hundred and forty-eight thousand, bringing the total to five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, direct payment to Hardin County. And this is remedial. Remember, we talked on the Johnson-Johnson, you can kind of do what you want to with that. You'd like to see some relationship to opioids, whether it's healthcare, whether it was drug impact, whether it was something of that nature. But you have tremendous leadway to do what you want to with that money. It'll be coming directly from the Comptroller to Hardin County. The next part is remember that the attorney fee contracts were waived. The defendants are paying our attorney fees and we petition, actually to the court. Judge Schaefer will determine our application for fees that are capped at nine and a half percent, up to twelve and a half percent for the entire state of Texas. We were glad that the Attorney General did sign on because he can also sign off on counties that did not participate. So y'all being participating would of course be a different situation for y'all. The term sheet controls, and if you'll notice, I showed that roughly there's the Region Two, there's seventy-one and a half to eighty-six and a half, around a million dollars that will be paid over time. Johnson-Johnson's already put in fourteen million. And Region Two counties will be petitioning for their share of that money. Remember, we talked about writing grants. You could do it jointly with another county. You can do it on your own. Those will have to be more geared towards opioid remediation in the future. So again, that kind of goes to law enforcement. It goes to criminal justice system that y'all have in your county sheriff's department, those type of things that y'all can do. I think the reason why I raise that now, when this comes online, of course, you can talk to us, Jeff Simon's office, Jeff was the lead on this. He's done a fabulous job, his law firm. And the settlement was driven, on a side note, by, we had three trial settings. We had Tarrant County, Dallas County, and Bear County. Those were the trial settings that we had that drove this thing to Texas getting such a good settlement, particularly Texas counties. So you can talk to us about how to apply, how to write the grants. But I raise it now so you can kind of start thinking about it, what you may need in the future, or what you may want to petition for this grant money. Region Two, I told you all before, and it consists of several counties. It's actually sixteen counties of various sizes. Most of them are southeast Texas. You have Angelina, Harden, Jasper, Newton, Orange, Brazoria, Galveston, Jefferson, Liberty, and Nakadoches, Polk, Sabine, San Augustine, San Jacinto, Shelby, and Tyler. All this money will be distributed to these counties. And...
That's the seventy-one to eighty-six number?
Yes, sir. And by the way, that gap on the seventy-one to eighty-six is the hospital districts by statute tag a portion of that money. And the Supreme Court's access to Justice Foundation, they get their hands on some of it too as it passes through. So we don't know exactly what that number's going to be. We don't have any control over that at all.
But sixteen counties have access to a minimum of the seventy-one million?
Yes, sir. In addition, now, of course, in addition to your direct payments. Every county won't get direct payments. Y'all get the direct. And so...
Commissioner Kirkendall, would you like to be recognized? Go ahead.
So we don't have a hospital district here in Hardin County, but we do have an indigent healthcare fund. Is, will that get equal treatment or not?
I would, I would assume absolutely so. In fact, I would see that if I was going to argue that, might that grant a discuss it, I would say more so because you don't have a hospital district. You have a greater need for that to help for indigent fund here, yes. I would certainly imagine. And when they write the parameters, we will furnish that to you, or you'll have access. I don't know if you even have a grant writer. A lot of counties do, some don't. But if you have somebody who writes grants and kind of pursues that for the county, that person can, will be the person that probably will be in contact with me and Jeff's office and with the controllers that will control the money. Here's just a couple of things. Remember that the, there's one defendant left. It's Allergan. I don't know what we're going to do with him. We'll just have to figure it out. I think the trial setting may change that as the trial keeps moving closer. And the other thing is that we, remember, there's some bankruptcy claims to a pending. Y'all probably read about the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy that it had been, that the wind of bankruptcy had been thrown out. They had to come up with more money. Those will be future claims. In the whole scheme of things, this thing will play out beyond these defendants for a longer period of time. So that's sort of where we are. We have a March tenth deadline to accept. We recommend, of course, that you accept it and that we put this in process to get, to start processing the settlement claim and preparing for the future claims to be filed.
Very much, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Minnick, do you have anything you want to add? Have you reviewed the proposal that Mr. Henderson just submitted?
Yes, I've reviewed it and I've gone over everything and I don't have any issues with that as well.
Do you echo their recommendation to the court?
I would. I would recommend the recommendation from the offer.
Any member of the court have any questions from Mr. Henderson or Mr. Minnick? So if we adopt this resolution, that states that we are accepting your recommendation and moving this forward?
Yes, sir. We had a couple exhibits that, you know, you're authorized, authorized you to sign it. Then they're releasing it, send a release to the settlement.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve the resolution, seconded by Commissioner Young. Only question I have is how soon will we see that money?
Well, the money I anticipate will be paid for sure this year, hopefully within six months. And they're all pitching the money in now. And I think once everything's up and running, my goal will be six months. You know, it's typical in law, six months may be nine. And, but the goal will be to start distributing it this year.
The auditor will probably just say, don't send that money the last week of September. And she's got an accounting issue. All right, any other comments or questions?
Thank y'all so much for letting us represent you. We'll still be around off and on, so we...
Yeah, just let us know how that other issue goes with that last defendant, as y'all find out.
Thank you, and I'll wait for the final document.
All right, I'll have him ready right after court.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, consider request by Chester Jordan, Executive Director of the American Red Cross of Southeast and Deep East Texas, to adopt Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two, proclaiming March two thousand twenty-two as American Red Cross month. That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, consider and possibly accept the governor's proclamation ordering the May seventh, two thousand twenty-two constitutional amendment election.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? Connie, y'all going to finish one and move right on into the next one, right?
Already starting on the next one.
Good deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider request by Chief Kevin Cummings, Adult Probation Department, to accept for filing amendments of the court, copy of Texas Department of Criminal Justice, Community Justice Assistance Division Financial Management Manual, Fiscal Year Twenty-One, Fourth Quarter Financial Report, Fiscal Year Twenty-One Statement of Financial Position, and Fiscal Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three Budget, all in accordance with Local Government Code one forty point zero zero four.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, consider acceptance of resignation of Mr. Daniel Payne as a Commissioner for Emergency Services District Four, and appointment of Mr. Carl Price to fill the vacancy. Commissioner Young?
Mr. Payne has served as the president of ESD Four for several years and he's ready to resign. Mr. Price has showed interest in that, and I'm moved to appoint him to the vacancy.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eleven, consider acceptance of the audited financial statements for Hardin County ESD Four for the year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and ESD Three for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Dorr, have you had an opportunity to review both of those?
I haven't.
All right, thank you very much.
So moved.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider approval of request by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to enroll all Hardin County employees and elected and appointed officials who have access to a government computer system or database and use a computer to perform at least twenty-five percent of the employees or the officials' required duties into the free cybersecurity training course for two thousand twenty-two, provided by the Texas Association of Counties. This is pursuant to Section two oh five four, point five one nine one of the Government Code.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. While we're talking about that, we received a notice from TAC last week telling us that with the situation going on over in Russia and Ukraine, that the cyber attacks are going to be stepped up and that local governments could see some of those. So just pass on to your staff that it's very important not to click on anything from anybody that they receive an email from that they don't know, just because that's how they're, that's how they start. And if they're going to add to that, you can. If not, you don't have to.
Oh, so you got it.
Thank you. Item thirteen, consider request by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to approve updated Equal Employment Opportunity Affirmative Action Plan. Ms. Harrington, is this just a change in date? All the other terms and additions of that plan stay the same?
I did have to change the language referring to the LGBTQ. And then I went ahead after speaking with Lori Floyd, our HR consultant over there. I felt it was in the best interest of the county to update our policy to match what they say in their EO policy. And I did have Matt review it, and he approved it.
What's LGBTQ?
Gay.
We have a policy for that?
We have to update in our old policy. I did send a copy with our old policy. It did say sexual orientation, but now we have to name them individually instead of lumping them in one group. According to that.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington. Any other questions regarding that? If not, entertain a motion. That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes forward. Item fourteen, consider request by Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to authorize the county judge to sign Affordable Care Act reporting and tracking service, also known as ARTS, program agreement offered by the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefits Board. Ms. Harrington, is this just a renewal?
Yes, sir.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider request by Commissioner Alvin Roberts and Commissioner Amanda Young to transfer heavy equipment operator employees from RMB four to RMB three effective March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. If approved, consider approval of following fiscal year twenty-two budget transfer. And that is a total of? It's twenty-six thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars in salary and thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars in charges moving from RMB four to RMB three. Either commissioner want to address that? Either commissioner want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second that.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item sixteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Amanda Young to purchase the two thousand twenty case DV forty-five CE asphalt roller, serial number ending in three six three nine, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents, for the RMB three department utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement. If approved, also consider approval of request to transfer twenty thousand dollars from oh one seven six two three 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 four Materials and Supplies to zero one seven six two three five seventy Equipment Purchase.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to sign Hardin County Indigent Healthcare Fraud Policy and Procedures. I believe the only change made to that was changing the name of the county clerk on that procedure.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider request by Sure to Cook, Tax Assessor Collector, to authorize a tax refund for account number zero 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 two dash zero zero two three, two four three one, for tax year two thousand twenty-one, which exceeds the one thousand dollar limit. And actually, the amount of that refund is one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty cents.
So moved. A second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consider and possibly appoint some members to and call the first meeting of the Hardin County Adult Sexual Assault Response Team, also known as SART, in accordance with Subchapter J, Chapter three fifty-one, Local Government Code. This is a new mandate on counties, and we're a little behind the gun, but we're getting it done because Linda Jax brought it up today. So if the court will agree, I'd like to approve, let's see. Should have a memo somewhere that has the names on there. It's not all of them, though. It's not all of them. All right, let's see. Chair Mark Davis, Chief Danny Sullivan with Lurton Pity, Rebecca Walton, the District Attorney, Linda Jax, the Hardin County Crime Victims Assistance Director, Brenda Garrison, she's the sane nurse for Baptist Hospital, and there's one more. Who is it, Linda? From Spindletop.
Oh, um, Penya, Ashley Penya.
Ashley Penya with Spindletop Services. And I have a motion from Commissioner Young.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I want to thank everybody who agreed to serve on that committee. The first meeting will be called for what date?
On March seventh, one o'clock, in the Red Room.
March seventh, one o'clock, in the Red Room. That was part of that motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Everybody agrees with that? All right, moving on. Item twenty, consider request by Commissioner LW Cooper Jr. to authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids to replace approximately one thousand, four hundred and forty feet of concrete roadway on West Chase Loop located in precinct one.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-one, consider approval of request by Commissioner Alvin Roberts to authorize the purchasing agent to sell a two thousand three John Deere tractor, six two two zero, serial number ending in two oh eight six, with a boot mower utilizing the Renee Bates Auctioneers Incorporated website.
So moved.
Second.
That motion back to Mr. Cooper, seconded by Mr. Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-two, consider request by Latasha Jones, Assistant Health Director, to authorize the purchasing agent to solicit qualification statements for international board-certified lactation consultant for the WIC department. If approved, appoint a committee to evaluate some mittles received and make recommendation to the court. Do you have the name of a proposed committee to provide to the court?
Yes, sir. Latasha Jones, Sabrina Janice, and Omni Truitt McCray.
And they're all in the WIC? But I know Latasha, the other two are WIC employees?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, to authorize the purchasing agent to solicit those qualification statements and appoint the evaluation committee as presented by the purchasing agent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-three, consider request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to approve appointment of evaluation committee concerning grant administrator and engineer for application related to DR four four eight five HNGP application. We authorized you to solicit, I think, RFUs, RFPs last time, but we did not appoint the committee. So who would you like to appoint to that?
Commissioner Young, Judge Melissa Mitten, and Aaron Tupper.
All right.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-four, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for materials and motions for all roads and bridges precincts.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-five, consider request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to present results of bids received for overlaying on the following county roads located in precinct three, approximately six thousand, three hundred and sixty feet on Atlantic Road, approximately three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five feet on Old Bats and Saratoga Road, and approximately five thousand, five hundred and twenty feet on Freejay Drive slash Willow Lane, and possibly award to successful vendor.
So moved.
Bids were opened on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, at two P.M. In the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present. We received two, one from Blacksmith Ventures for four dollars and twenty cents a square yard, and CMM Construction for three dollars a square yard.
Mr. Cooper, you have a motion on the floor. Is that for CMM?
Uh, yes, her local, yeah.
All right. And who seconds that?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bless you. Item twenty-six, consider request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to purchase, I'm sorry, to present recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning qualification statements received for design and construction of a freestanding emergency communication radio tower for Hardin County CDBG-dR infrastructure radio tower project, and possibly award to successful firm. Ms. Sims?
Qualification statements were open on February second, twenty twenty-two, at two P.M. In the purchasing department front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, Aaron Tupper, Lloyd Wall from Motorola, and Mike Wise from Bearcom were present. The evaluation committee was Aaron Tupper, Sheriff Davis, and Commissioner Kirkendall. We received three proposals from New Palm Solutions, Western Towers, and Motorola Solutions. And the evaluation committee scored Motorola the highest. Mr. Cooper?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Want to thank the committee for serving. I know that, I think those were some thick responses y'all had to go through and read, so thank y'all for taking the time to do that. Item twenty-seven, consider request by Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to present recommendation from evaluation committee concerning proposals received for permanently mounted multiband two-way radios for Hardin County CDBG-dR infrastructure radio project, and possibly award to successful vendor. Ms. Sims?
Proposals were open on February second, twenty twenty-two, at two P.M. In the purchasing department front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, Aaron Tupper, Lloyd Wall of Motorola, and Mike Wise at Bearcom were present. Voicion Communications, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, and Motorola Solutions submitted proposals. The evaluation committee was Aaron Tupper, Sheriff Davis, and Commissioner Young, and they scored Motorola the highest.
Member of the privilege?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Can you tell me who the representative was from Voicion Communications? Do you remember his name?
I don't.
I received a letter last week from somebody asking us to reject these. They didn't agree with the way that they were scored, but I disagreed with that request, and I should have probably sent that to y'all before.
I got the same, I got the same letter.
I agree with the way they were scored. I disagree with the complaint from the vendor, and...
Is the person who sent that letter in the audit? I was hoping he would be here because he said our committee didn't know what they were doing. And I think they were pretty top of the line on that committee. So anyway, I'm with...
Absolutely.
I'm with the judge. I agree with what the committee put out.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-eight, consider request by Connie Beckton, County Clerk, to approve consolidation of county election precincts for the May seventh, two thousand twenty-two constitutional amendment election. We should have in our packets a proposal that was put together by Mrs. Beckton and Alyssa Freeman. And if y'all haven't had time, please look over that. And if y'all haven't had time, please look over that. Let's make sure that everybody agrees with this before we do so. And, Ms. Beckton, do you have anything you want to say regarding the proposal?
Uh, no, sir. It's just what we'd like to consolidate, because there's only going to be two amendments on there. And, uh, one E S D five will be on there.
That's to increase the rate or something?
A tax rate, mhm.
Okay.
Up to two percent.
Ms. Court.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-nine, discussion of, uh, discussion only of any item that's not on this agenda without taking any action by any county official. Uh, Mrs. Bolton asked me to remind all election officials to come eat at the Lumberton Performing Arts Center today at eleven thirty. So, I want to make sure I have to get that. Any other discussion items? Any member of the court or any official present?
No adjourned.
Okay, I'm listening. Shirley Cook? Come on up, sir. Yes, we have an election going on. Early voting ended on Friday. I think a little over ten percent of the voters voted early. And tomorrow is election day from seven A M to seven P M. Can't believe that we forgot that.
We hadn't forgot.
Uh, Allen probably forgot. Allen, you have anything you want to say?
I'm retiring.
I'd say anybody else. If not, I think you made a motion to adjourn, and you segued it. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Y'all have a great week.